I will call to order the organizational meeting on Tuesday, April 15th of the Verona Common Council. We'll be given the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Reiki.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Am I an alderperson?
Yes.[64.51][64.51](laughing) And alderperson yours.
Here.
We have everyone here, thank you for that. Next on the agenda is, we have the oath of office for elected officials, and we have Judge Weigle with us here this evening to administer the oath. Begin with me.
Sure, thank you. These can get somewhat repetitive, but all of the words are important, and this is something that we do after each citywide election, and I'm honored and pleased to swear in each of the persons elected in this last go-round. And Mayor, I guess we'll begin with you. And you have an oath? Okay. Raising your right hand. I, John Hokumer.
I, John Hokumer.
Having been elected to the office of Mayor.
Having been elected to the office of Mayor.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. Thank you. The next person, if he's been able to quiet his electronic device.[156.19][156.19](laughing) Turn that 8-track player off, man.
Too true, too true.
Will be the person that was elected as alderperson for District 1 for the city of Verona, and I'd like you to repeat after me and raise your right hand as you do, please. I, Mac McGilvery.
I, William Clinton McGilvery.
Thank you. Have been elected to the office of alderperson, District 1.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, District 1.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Congratulations. Mr. Linder? Yeah? I'd also like you to raise your right hand and repeat after me if you would, please. I, Jack Linder.
I, Jack Linder.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, District 2.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, District 2.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations, please. Brad Steiner?
Stand up.[263.12][263.12](laughing) Thank you. I, Brad Steiner.
I, H. Brad Steiner.
Thank you. Having been elected to the office of alderperson, District 3.
Having been elected to the office.
Alderperson, District 3.
Alderperson, District 3.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thanks, Judge. All right. You too, Mayor. Bill?
Hi, Evan Touche.
I, Jamie Evan Touche.
I think I've missed just about everybody on that. Thank you. Thank you, Alder Touche. Having been elected to the office of alderperson, District 4.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, District 4.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And you'll do it impartially.
Impartially.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Although that concludes the swearing-in, and I don't have a microphone, but I guess I kind of have the floor for a minute.
Go ahead, Speaker.
And thank you and welcome to the people who are out here. You know, I'm honored and pleased to do this. It's not a mere rote ceremony. I was honored and pleased to do this last year for a group of incoming alderpersons, equally so, and I commend each of you, five from tonight, and each of the existing council persons for your willingness to serve and to put your time and efforts and thought and hard work into improving, you know, the city of Verona. And I commend those who ran against you for their willingness to serve were they have been elected. Without wanting to appear preachy, I guess I just want to remind something that you all know, the alders and the mayor, and that's that governance is really for the people. Issues are not won or lost. It's not about imposing your will. I don't think Verona has or should have any star-bellied sneetches, but rather a group of people who try very hard and work very hard and sometimes have differences of opinion and hopefully learn from each other's differences and walk that, you know, mile in somebody else's moccasins to understand and to maybe improve or perhaps modify their own positions to improve the end product for taxpayers and everybody out here in this city. Again, that's not an indictment of anything. I think it's very healthy that we have debates, and I just commend all of you for putting your time and efforts into this. So congratulations to those elected, and here's looking forward to another couple of great years.
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks again, Bill, for administering the oath. I think everyone on the council knows that at one point Bill was on the city council as well until he got promoted to municipal judge. So Bill and I sat next to each other, and we had some very good years on the council. I was reminded this morning, I spoke to a group up in northern Wisconsin, there were a number of newly-elected county board supervisors, and did presentations on running effective meetings and their roles and responsibilities of county government, and just two things. One is it reminded me that it was 30 years ago this month that I first, that I took my first oath of office back in 1984, and I've just enjoyed my time on local government, serving in local government. I mentioned it last night, that the community service is really important to me, and I think that any of us that serve, that's part of the reason that we did it, and it's very, very rewarding. The other thing, part of the presentation that I did was when we talk about running effective meetings, and I can tell you many examples of bad meetings and how meetings are not run very well. One of the things that I've always been very proud of here, and I saw it a lot in the legislature too, is that it is, we, I think we, when we have a meeting, it is more formal. We are the corporate body. We have been elected by the citizens that we serve, and we should be formal. And so we respect each other. We don't, when we call on a person, we don't call them by first name. If we do, it's by accident. We, you know, we refer to them by, you know, whoever they are, Alderperson Linder or whoever. And I think that's very important so that we are more formal because we are doing the people's work. And I think that when that doesn't happen, then things just, it can very easily get out of hand. So I'm just very proud of the fact that all of us, we may not always agree, but we run, and all of us, it's not just me presiding, we have effective meetings, and I think that's very good, so thank you for that. We do have a number of other items this evening under Mayor's business. The first one would be election of, actually, before we do that, well, we can do it under announcements. The first order of business then will be election of city council president. Are there any nominations or motions at this point? Mr. Diaz?
I nominate Alder Doyle for president.
Alderperson Doyle has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Mr. Linder?
I'd like to nominate alderperson McGilvery.
Alderperson McGilvery has been nominated. Are there any further nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGilvery?
Rather than start the year with a split, I'd just as soon remove myself from the election ballot, I guess you would say, and I can support Ms. Doyle. I think it's good that we have somebody new to come along and start training for the next position.
It's, thank you for that, Mr. McGilvery. That's one of the things I mentioned this morning, when we talk about nominations, nominations can come from the floor, an individual can nominate themselves. Once a person has been nominated, that person can withdraw if they want to. No one else can force them to withdraw, and we saw that happen here this evening, so.
I appreciate Mr. Linder's support, and I appreciate the support that the council gave me last year, so thank you very much. I've enjoyed serving.
Okay. If there are no other nominations, a motion would be in order to cast the unanimous ballot for alderperson Doyle as council president. We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there?
Go ahead.
Seconded by Mr. Touche. All in favor of the election of Elizabeth Doyle as city council president, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have selection of city council representative to the plan commission. Are there any motions or nominations at this point? And again, the city council representative on the plan commission is appointed by this body, not by the mayor, so it's the alderpersons that make that appointment. Mr. Yours?
Much in the same vein as Mr. McGilvery. I got the, I had the privilege of sitting next to Mr. Linder the last year on the plan commission and came to have a great deal of respect for him and the work he did on the commission, and I'm sure he's going to bring that same type of work here to the council. And with that, I think stability on the plan commission and someone who's really invested in it, as Mr. Linder has been for a number of years, I think he should stay, and so I'd like to appoint him to be the council's representative on the plan commission.
Alderperson Yours has nominated alderperson Linder for the plan commission appointee. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we should have a motion then that would approve alderperson Linder as the appointee on the plan commission?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours, seconded by Ms. Reiki. All in favor of the appointment of Jack Linder to the plan commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Jack, congratulations. With Jack being elected to the common council, that created a vacancy on the plan commission, and this evening I will be making the appointment of Scott Manley to complete the remainder of Jack Linder's term. So with that, I would ask for a motion to confirm the appointment of Scott Manley to the plan commission.
(inaudible). Does the council confirm that? (inaudible).
For plan commission, the citizen appointment.
That's right.
Is just made directly by the mayor.
That's right. That's right, okay. So I guess I'll just make the announcement that, and part of the confusion is, if you remember last year when I was reading through the ordinances, because I wanted to make sure that we were doing things right, we had not been doing things right correctly in the past, so thank you for that. Committee appointments, if you want to hand those out. And actually, just finalize these today. One of the things, when I was putting the committees together, I wanted to take a look at what people's preferences were, what I believed their skills were that could best help the city, and also to, I attempted to cause as least amount of disruption as I possibly could to the committee appointments. So I'm going to read these off, since the people at home don't have these in front, in front of them. I'll read through all the standing committees and then the council appointees on the other boards and commissions, and then it's my intent that next week, for the next council meeting, we will make the other citizen appointees to the other boards and commissions. So for the finance committee, the chairperson would be Mr. McGilvery. The other two members are Elizabeth Doyle and Jack Linder. The personnel committee, the chairperson is Elizabeth Doyle, and the other two members are Heather Reiki and Dale Years. On public safety and welfare committee, the chairperson is Mr. Years, and the other two members are Heather Reiki and Evan Touche. Public works sewer and water committee, the chairperson is Evan Touche, and the two remaining members are Luke Diaz and Mac McGilvery. On the senior services committee, the chairperson remains Brad Steiner, and the other two members of the seniors committee is Mr. McGilvery and Mr. Diaz. On the ad hoc public safety committee, this is dealing with the fire and EMS station, I am making the appointments of Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Reiki, Ms. Reiki, and Mr. Yours. Alderperson McGilvery and Alderperson Reiki had been on the ad hoc committee, we're reappointing, and Mr. Yours would be taking the spot that Scott Manley had on the ad hoc committee. On the community development authority, I've asked Jack Linder if he would be willing to accept that appointment, and I really like the idea of having a tie between the finance committee and the plan commission, which Jack will serve on both, and I thought that that made a lot of sense. The ethics board, which has never met since I've been on the council, which is a good thing, that if we don't have to meet, but we do want to get some policies, written policies in place, and Mike Baer had served on that board, and I've asked Dale Years if he would accept that appointment. Fitcharona EMS, Alderperson Years had been the appointee on the EMS and would remain as such. On the library board, Brad Steiner had been the council appointee on there, and that, I'm suggesting the same. Parks and forestry, no change there as well. Alderperson Steiner and Alderperson Reiki. And then the citizen appointee to the plan commission, which I indicated before, is Mr. Manley. So with that, those are my committee appointments, and I would ask for your confirmation.
Move approval as presented, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Touche. Any discussion on the committee appointments? If not, all those in favor of confirming the appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. So now we are on to Agenda Item 5E, which is announcements. Prior to announcements, I would just, I would ask if Alderperson Touche and Alderperson Linder, not new to the council, completely new because he had served before, but maybe for the benefit of some of the people watching at home, maybe if you could provide just a little background on yourself, if you would.
My background. Previously, I served on the library board back in 2006. Later had the opportunity to serve on PFC, and shortly after that, I served on the council for two years. Took a year off, and I'm back, so that's my, I would say, my city public service. Father of three, beautiful wife, lovely family, very proud Verona citizen, really love our city, and I'm very, very blessed to serve in this position, and I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Linder?
I moved to Verona in 1999, so I've been here 15 years. I started on the plan commission in 2004, and then was appointed to the board for the city council a couple of years later, where I served for about two and a half years, and then I left because we moved, decided to move to another part of the city in a different district, and then I've been on the plan commission for the last five and a half years till now. So I'm married, wife, and my five children are in the audience today, so.
Very well behaved, five children.
I'm very excited to be here. I really am looking forward to working with all of you. I got to meet a lot of you already, which I think is great. I also wanted to say thank you to Dale for nominating me for the plan commission. It's been great working with you, Dale, and I know you come prepared at the meetings and know your stuff, and to have you nominate me means a lot, so I wanted to thank you publicly for that. So and I look forward to working with everybody, so.
Thank you, Jack. We look forward to working with you as well. Any other announcements this evening? Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Yeah, just for the council members, I wanted to let you know that we have worked on updating a council orientation manual. This is something we had put together last year with a number of new alders coming in. Copies for the new alders. We also made that updated version available electronically through the city's Dropbox account, which is available to council members. If anyone would like a hard copy of that or needs help getting the electronic copy, just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Seeing no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Reiki. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
We also made that updated version available electronically through the city's Dropbox account, which is available to council members. If anyone would like a hard copy of that or needs help getting the electronic copy, just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Seeing no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order. So, moved, we have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Reiki. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried and we are adjourned. Thank you.